Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight. It is Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, and I am calling the regular School Board meeting of the Anchorage School Board to order. In the boardroom, I have myself, Elisa Vakilas, Board Member Hildy, Board Member Marsette. On Zoom, we have Board Member Holloman, Board Member Donley, Board Member Mitchell, and Board Member Bellamy. Also in the boardroom with us tonight is our Superintendent Dr. Dana Bishop, as well as several administrative staff. We do have everybody here tonight. Next up is the flag salute, and I would like to ask, Emily, would you please guide us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to acknowledge with gratitude the Denina people, both past and present, who have lived on these lands since long before Anchorage was here. May we all be good stewards of these lands. Chinon. And Emily?
My name is Emily Hickox, and I am the student representative to this board. I was elected to serve through the Student Advisory Board, and my votes are advisory, so I offer a student voice to the body. We want to welcome you to our meeting, and thank you for attending and supporting the work of the Anchorage School District and this board. The board thanks students, parents, teachers, staff, school business partners, and the entire community for your investment in our district with your time, your talent, and your tax dollars.
Thank you. I'd like to, at this time, just turn it over to Board Member Marsette. She had one or two things she would just like to add in appreciation with our opening statement.
First of all, I want to shout out to our counselors. It is Counselors Week of Recognition and the great job that they do and the sacrifices that we ask them to make also, along with our other staff. I also want to point out that it's Black History Month. It is a time for us to recognize the contributions that have been made by, and I'll just read a little bit. It's on our website here, and it just talks about that this started out as a one-week celebration back in February of 1926, and then it encompasses the birthdays of both Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Response was overwhelming. Black History Clubs sprang up. Teachers demanded materials to instruct their pupils, and progressive whites, not simply white scholars and philanthropists stepped forward to endorse the effort. The celebration was expanded to a month in 1976. The nation's bicentennial President Gerald Ford urged Americans to seize the opportunity to honor the too太多neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every era of endeavor throughout our history. That year, 50 years after the first celebration, the association held the first African-American History Month. By this time, the entire nation had come to recognize the importance of Black history in the drama of the American story. And since then, each American president has issued African-American History Month proclamations. And the Association, now the Association of the Study of African-American Life and History, continues to promote the study of Black history all year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda.
My second.
Thank you. I have a first and a second. Are there any changes, edits, or anything of the like to the agenda as written? Hearing no objection, the agenda is approved as written. Next up, we have our military report, and I see that Colonel Delamater has joined us and would like to turn it over to him. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Vakilas. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just a couple of quick items for you here from the installation. So first thing I wanted to do is just make sure everyone's tracking that Colonel Aguilar, the installation commander, rescinded the public health emergency here on the installation effective 29 January. And at the same time, she also took us back down to Health Protection Condition Bravo. So we did that because of the sustained low number of cases that we've been seeing here on the installation, which is much of what we've been seeing in the local community, low test positivity rates, as well as the fact that we've got good capacity in the installation's medical facilities. So those are the main reasons why we went ahead and made that decision. She's been in close coordination with the acting mayor to make sure that the adjustments we've been making to base posture are in alignment with what is being done in the municipality, and will continue to do that. So that's the first item. The second item I wanted to do is to thank the board and Dr. Bishop specifically for letting Mr. Tom Roth and Ms. Heather Philp come in brief virtually at our installation staff meeting a couple of weeks ago. They actually did it on the first day of school, and what they did is they were very helpful in articulating to our installation leaders some of the classroom and bus transportation mitigation measures that are in place as the kids go back to school. And I can tell you, a lot of us were out at the schools on the first day to kind of help, to give our thanks to the teachers and the faculty and cheer on the new kids as they came back to the classroom, and very, very impressed with the diligence of the bus drivers and following those protocols, and also with the school faculty. So a big shout out to Mr. Roth and Ms. Philp for helping us there. We're very grateful to have a great relationship with the Anchorage School District. That's all I had for tonight. I'll pause for any questions from the board.
Thank you. Did any board members have any comments or questions for the Colonel? Seeing done, thank you so much for joining us tonight and for the update, and we look forward to hearing from you again in a month. Next up in the agenda, our Student Advisory Board report. Emily, how's it going?
It's good. We're super excited. We had our first meeting on the 21st of January. We're super thankful. Dr. Johnson came and talked to us a little bit and gave us her full support, and so we're super happy. Our biggest thing is, over sort of our break from Student Advisory Board, I worked with Mr. Willis and Ms. Lewis to rewrite our constitution, and so we passed that. And so we added some changes to our executive board as well as our committees, and so we're hoping to get that rolling. We're going to elect a secretary and a public relations officer in February, and then at our March meeting, we will elect the president-elect, who will become the president for next school year, as well as the student representative. So hopefully in March, we'll have a new person for you guys to meet and work with for the upcoming year. And then, sorry, our next meeting is on the 18th of this month.
Thank you. Did anybody have any comments or questions for Ms. Emily?
Nice to see you back, Emily. We missed you.
Indeed. And we are looking forward to working with some student youth representatives this weekend. For the Alaska Association of School Boards has their annual youth summit, and just looking forward to getting the student voices, you know, out with our legislators. So thank you to all of that. Member Mitchell?
Yeah, I just had a question for Emily. In the past, you've asked for somebody who's willing to be the student rep on the school board, and it sounds like maybe now you're making that part of the duty of being president. Is that a shift?
Yes. So we came to the conclusion that we thought that it would be best for Student Advisory Board for the president to also be the person who is communicating with you guys on the board, just because it sort of gives the president that responsibility, which is one of the main things that we're really trying to encourage with SAB, is getting that communication between us, the students, and you guys. And so we think that it's a good shift. It also sort of consolidates our executive board a little bit, and then there's more opportunities for us to really work as a group and less separation as like an executive board on a body, where you want to work as an entire student group to get things done.
Well, and that way whoever's running for president knows that's part of their duty, so it's just a done deal. That sounds great.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you, Emily. Next up in the agenda, we have our Board Conference and Committee reports. I will just start with Governance and Chair Hildy.
Thank you. We have not met since our last meeting. We'll have some non-action items, so we'll wait for those. When we get to them, our next meeting will be February 9th at 3:30, and you can be on Zoom to join in.
Thank you. And the Chair of Communications, Chair Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. We have not met since our last meeting, which was, I think it was the 12th of January. Our next meeting will follow the Governance Committee meeting on February 9th, and we will meet from 4:30 to 5:30. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, Chair Marsette for Finance.
Yes, we haven't met since our last meeting. Our next meeting, we've changed our meeting times around so that we can have more work sessions. So Finance's next meeting date will be February 10th. It'll be 12 to 1. It'll be held remotely. It'll be a Zoom link posted on the school board calendar and agenda. And don't miss it, because you know, numbers are exciting and worth talking about.
Thank you. And as this is budget season, there's always a lot to talk about. Next up on the agenda is community outreach, and so didn't know if any board members had any comments or things they were hearing around at community councils that they wanted to share with the board. Member Marsette?
I failed to share last time, and I have passed this on to Dr. Bishop, but there was a question about the changing of the name to, from East High School to Betty Davis High School, and they were just asking me the cost for that, and I had no idea. So I'm sure when Dr. Bishop gets to it, it's not a priority. I'll be able to pass that on. The other thing is I've attended several meetings. I've had problems getting into some of their Zoom meetings with the links and have communicated that, but for the most part, it's been pretty quiet, and I haven't had a lot of questions.
Thank you. Next up, I see Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to thank Member Marsette for reminding us that it's Black History Month, and I'd like to just add real quickly that the theme for this year is the Black family, representation, identity, and diversity. And so, and I'm really encouraged, I'd like to encourage people to look into what that, some of the information that Ms. Marsette shared that's on our website, as well as engage in your communities and your schools. I attended the AEDC, and I think Members Marsette and Mitchell also attended that, that, I think, I don't even know what to call it, a meeting, community summit about our economic situation here in Anchorage, the forecast for, the current condition and the forecast for it. And that was, I mean, it had some, it had some bright spots, but we've got a ways to go in terms of recovering and from COVID and regaining our economic strengths. The other thing is, at the Federation of Community Council, we had a little preview of the bonds, and I will say that I was so happy that ASD was not on the list for a bond this year, but there will be several as soon as they are, I think they've been approved by the muni. I don't have them all, but there's several. Fire Department, roads, the usual. And then there is a reading program going on at Fairview Elementary, and that the representative to the council is looking for gifts for the students. So if anyone would like to reach out to the school to donate those gifts, that would be great. And my final comment is, this is a fifth year that NEA has joined with the, I think it's NEA Justice, to recognize that this week, for the fifth year, is Black Lives Matter in School Week, and there are a series of activities on the NEA website for people to peruse. So I thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Member Marsette?
Sorry, I forgot something. I didn't know if this was the right time to do it or not, but hey, what the heck. I did go out and visit 10 of our schools last week. Very impressed with what was going on. I saw happy kids, not smiles, because they had their mask on, but I saw happy eyes. Teachers were happy. It looked like school to me like any other day, except for the mask and the distancing and the barriers. But, you know, one preschool teacher told me, she said, you know, my kids are so on it. We prepared that they're going about their routine, doing everything they need to do, their masks, washing their hands, sanitizing, whatever they need to do. She said, we actually got done 30 minutes early because they knew what they needed to do, and they're so excited about being back in school that, you know, they are doing this. I was just over, went to several elementary schools. I went to three middle schools and one high school, and I can tell you, I mean, there's concern. I won't lie to you, but for the most part, I saw kids that were happy, that were engaged, and I, it just supported everything that I've been supporting about getting our kids back into school. So thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on in the agenda. Next up is our goal monitoring section and grades for secondary, and I'm, at this time, going to turn it over to our Superintendent, Dr. Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President, and I wanted to just share with the board, as well as publicly, that outcome monitoring is going to be a focus for our board meetings as we move into the future. With the board adopted new goals and guardrails, the charge is to respond to the board and demonstrate growth and evidence that we can meet those goals, and then also be able to articulate, you know, what is being done and some of the changes that we might need. So this is an accountability, accountability measured by the Anchorage School Board for its programs and its system, and especially for the learning of children. Until we get to those initiatives in regard to the goals and guardrails, we are engaging in outcome monitoring, and this particular one, although it is off the schedule of the goals and guardrails somewhat, secondary grades, I would like the board to know, that are evidenced as success in post-high school education. So college is fine. Many times, there's been several studies, one through Gallup, and the others, I'd have to get the university. They did demonstrate that secondary grades especially are a better indicator of college success, because they do have somewhat of, more than just knowledge of the content in them. Generally, secondary grades are about willingness to work as well, and those are some of the things that we find in our sports and our competitions as well, taking feedback, moving on, finishing something. So I'm happy to share with you, secondary grades. In fact, that this somewhat does tie to a board goal for college life and career readiness. So with that, we'll start with the numbers. And again, this is just the distribution of the marks, and I want to say that again, it is about the marks. It is the number of grades given, not children. Not, because we know a child could have up to three grades or up to six grades. So these are the number of marks. And we have basically just compared two years. In an instance, this is really to demonstrate, the board has asked about how has really learning through this pandemic influenced children's success. And so therefore, in general years, we'll have three to five trend lines. We just took one year to the next, knowing that this is such an outlier year, that we're just comparing it last year to this year. So 19 and 20 is the full secondary grade mark distribution. If you look at the total at the bottom, it's nearly 158,000 marks. And so multiple marks per student. The I and NA at the bottom is basically an incomplete. It's really more of a non-grade or null. It doesn't show any value. It's just laid out there so that it wouldn't interfere with the GPA. It is basically a non-mark, more so than any type of mark. In 2021, you can see that the number of marks decreased, and it really had to do with the having less students, and especially having students take less courses at a given time. And so we just wanted to demonstrate that both of those enrollment, as well as how schedules were organized, may have influenced this. Nonetheless, what we've chosen to do is to utilize percentages, so that you know, within the subset, what are the percentages rather than the exact numbers, but the exact numbers help you understand the significance of the percentages. So they do have a relation. Again, in the incomplete, remember, it's kind of a null grade. It's no value yet. The increase was at 3/100ths of 1% we had last year, and certainly last school year, rather. Last calendar year was part of this school year. We have five, almost 5 and 1/2% of our grades, and I'll share a little bit about that. You'll notice in grades 6, 7, and 8, we really have our schools working towards allowing flexibility in grades and pushing out the incomplete or the final marking period for that grade. At the next slide, we'll just take a look at the count of marks earned for fall of 2021. If you notice, is lower again. There's the 157, 984 at the top, and the 84, 339. So the data that you just saw is now demonstrated in this graph, and we took the liberty to use a new graph with this, as we're not on a line item, because it's not necessarily too much change. The stacked graphs can demonstrate the total is 100%, and then you can see the distribution of that 100%. Between 19 and 2021, 1920 and then 2021, Fs did increase by about 3%, and As decreased by 1%. And for the aggregate, that is not statistically significant when we run through the test of regression. However, we are continuing to look at individual student groups to see if any of those changes were significant in those areas. In the simple statistics method, anytime we fall behind, it's significant. I'm speaking in statistical terms when I say that it's not significant. So roughly, the largest drop was in the B category at 4%. So we're going to move on, and we always want to look at, who are the students that fall into these categories and what's happening? For the first thing we did is look at grade level. And if you notice, I had shared the large number of Is or Ns, NAs. Those really resided in the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. If you can see, there are some, 9 through 12 as well. But if you notice, in the one year to the next, the missing orange, if you will. Orange is F, an F grade. And so we really continue to work with students to find success in their learning. And so that's, if you take a look there, primarily, I would guess that we will find over 90% of our Is in our middle schools, because they continue to work with students at this time to, really, it's not about earning a grade. They are focused on filling the gap of learning that was missed. Likewise, you can take a look, if we just stay with the Fs, one of the things that you might notice is that that is a significant increase on this chart in regard to last year to this year. And most likely, what's the elephant in the room is really our pedagogy switch from face-to-face to online. But I'll share that in 1920, the Fs accounted for about 4 to 8%, and as I said, they really jumped, and they're from 1 to 16% in this present year. The grade levels that really demonstrated the most struggle with Fs were our 9th and 10th graders. 10th grade is a key grade. That's stabilization in 9th grade. If students struggle at the end of 9th grade without supports, generally, we have students leave school or drop out. There are levers by 10th grade. So this is concerning to us. And between 19 and 20, 1920 and 2021, the trend for high school students was a decrease of Bs and Cs and an increase of As and Fs. And so essentially, what we've done is really polarized the achievement. So the middle kind of moved to the ends, and I think if you're showing up and online, then you potentially have, with the additional time given, to raise your grade. But by the same token, we do have, and our teachers have shared, we have students that don't turn on their monitor. They're not logging in. Our teachers are looking at a blank screen, so they're finding it difficult to reach some of our learners from home. But again, it's especially concerning for us in grades 9 and 10, because those are such critical years, to have the finishers in 11th and 12. Next, we want to look at student groups by ethnicity. And once again, you can take a look at the stacked graphs, they're called, and they're divided by the distribution of grades by each ethnicity, by the two years that were selected, 2019 and 2020, and these are fall of the school year 1920, 2021. And just to share, in both 1920 and 2021, the Alaska Native American Indian student group struggled the most with Fs, and the rate of Fs for the Alaska Native American Indian was 14%, and it grew to nearly 19%. This continues, this student group continues to be the one for which we need to really review our past thoughts on learning and how learning happens, and to really look at how our system is set up for the success of all students. And then we ask ourselves, how do we impact this, knowing educational attainment is so important? The largest change of any student ethnicity group was the increase in Fs for the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander, and they rose from a little over 9% in the fall of last year to 17% in the fall of this school year. The trend for letter marks, when viewed by ethnicity, is a decrease in As and Bs and an increase in Ds and Fs. And this is all with the exception of the Black student group, which increased As by 2% between those two years. An important consideration, though, when viewing these data, is that the Alaska Native American Indian student group shows that 12 and 1/4% of their letter grades fall in the NA or the I, while the Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander shows about a little over 8 and 1/2% in this category. This means we don't truly know the distribution of these groups, yet even if we took the 12 and 1/4 and 8 and 1/2 of the incompletes and put them in the A category, this would still be well below the two highest categories of Asian and whites, at 50 and 1/2%, respectively, and 52, almost 52 and 1/2. And so you can just, the stacked graphs, what that allows you to do is to see the picture right away, the green, right away the orange, and the differences in those. And again, it doesn't, we know that whether it's a student's, you know, zip code where they're born, or the ethnicity or nationality or race for which they're born, that that is not an indicator of intellect, that all of our students have the potential to learn, and it is upon our school district and our educators to understand and review our practices on how we ensure that all means all. And these are some of the tough conversations principals are having with their teachers, teachers are having with teachers, supervisors are having, and certainly that you're having with me, and really accounting my evaluation on these data and the success of students. Looking at other groups, we also look at interest groups of students, and these are interest groups. And just for those that don't know, within the school system and the federal government, there's certain student groups that they have recognized that may need more revenue as an input. And certainly, Anchorage School District, as well as most school districts, if you take federal money around the entire nation, could receive additional revenue, and particularly with these student groups, to really have additional inputs into their success. The largest change of any of these groups was the increase for Fs for economically disadvantaged students, and the total free and/or reduced lunch, and there's some other indicators that can put you in the slot if you don't have those data or actually are in the lunch program. if you don't have those data or actually are in the lunch program. That is about 40% of our entire school district. But many of our schools, this number is 100%. And so we really have some disparity among our schools as well in these types of student groups and their representation in our schools. So between 19, fall of 19 and fall of 20, the trend for all groups of interest was a decrease in As, Bs, and Cs and an increase in Ds and Fs. Basically, those grades that moms and dads like to see when you take home, they decreased. And the grades that we consider leading to failure or school dropout are the Ds and Fs. And while D is a passing grade, it's generally, you don't know, is that really close to a C passing or is it really close to failing? And therein lies kind of our, we don't like to see the Ds and Fs and we certainly want to work with students. An interesting pattern for the groups of interest is the consistency of the letter mark categories. For economically disadvantaged students are EDS. You might see it on your paperwork or reports that you read. And ELL and students with disabilities were within a few percentage points of each other for the letter grades this fall. Students with disabilities saw the smallest decrease of As, while economically disadvantaged students saw a decrease of almost 4 and 1/2%. Students with disabilities was less than 1%. Language learners were in between those at a little over 3% for As. But despite each group having a unique challenges and situations, it is interesting that the distributions were relatively similar. I do want to add that the column all the way on the right is all students so that you can have a comparison of, when you look at data, you want to know to what, to what am I comparing it? But certainly, the Ns in these categories could overlap. In fact, I could have one student that is represented in all of these categories, and I'd just like to review that with you, that a student could be an English language learner while receiving, learning on an independent learning plan or individualized learning plan, students with disabilities, as well as being economically disadvantaged. So these are not, it's not a zero-sum game here. They could add up to be one student represented in all three categories. Hence, the marks go up and down, up and down, in not a pattern that you would expect. When we take out, when we looked at all students and took out ninth, 10th, 11th, they would add up. These don't add back up, just so you can understand that because the student can be in multiple categories. But I leave you with the information. There is work to do. I would say that online learning and having to Zoom without a choice and supports, interest or disposition to do it, there's lots of many things that impact that that we are not doing as well as our teachers have and had the success with students face-to-face. And I think that that has been something that we have talked about in the past, that we have encouraged for getting back to school. Certainly, as you saw, an increase in the students. There are some that did better. So this isn't just ubiquitous one way or another. But certainly, many of our students are finding that this is a struggling time in their grades.
Did any board members have any comments or questions for Dr. Bishop or her team?
I did want to add one thing. Sorry, Madam President, I do want to add one more thing. I keep getting turned off. He reminded me that in the middle school grades, part of the plan was that if students, they saw students in the fall falling behind, that they were going to work towards after-school activities in summer school to, again, address the learning. It's not so much about getting a grade anymore. Our kids have to be able to have enough knowledge to matriculate up and be successful at the next grade. And simply giving a grade and a passing grade may not be enough to be successful. And we don't want the domino effect to happen that if I was unsuccessful in one grade, when I matriculated, that I would be unsuccessful in that because I wouldn't be ready. We are trying to meet that learning gap. And so we're really taking a rethinking what summer school means and what, how do we assess kids and find the gaps without having them do everything all over or repeating a grade? That doesn't serve them well. We want to specifically use machine thinking, if you will, use what we know in their assessments to actually target the space that they need to learn, essentially not waste their time and maximize their learning so that they can be successful as they move on.
All right, we have some hands up in the queue. We will start with Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. You did mention, you know, data by school. And we didn't see that. I don't imagine it's, I know this is just a confusing dataset and, you know, thank you for providing this. Are by school looking at to see where their students are? I'm presuming these are grades through second quarter? And then addressing that in bringing small groups back? Or bringing, you know, increasing the number of small groups they're bringing back?
That is a great question. And I would like the board to know that as we provide you the aggregate and then pull apart and disaggregate it just by student groups and ethnicity, we also have schools and we can share those data as well. I want you to know that principals and their teams do exactly that. One of the things that secondary did is on their first request to have school the third quarter, they wanted to target equity and equity of attainment and face-to-face learning and have kids in new schedules. They had about, at the last board meeting, they had a little under 5% of students back. They've grown that, I think, to about 12 or 13%. So they continue to communicate with families about coming back in, really receiving services to assist in supporting children. So unequivocally, I would say absolutely yes. Our elementary principals, secondary, middle school principals, were really using the data to inform our decisions because time is of the essence, if you will. If the board would like a report per school, we absolutely can do that and we'll put it in the Board Connect. These data are public, so they're not by students' names, but we can locate them to schools and share those as well.
Great. Thank you. Next up is Member Marsette.
So a couple of things. Thank you very much. I know it takes time to do this and we're all trying to work at getting our students back in school. One of the things I would be very interested in seeing is 19th school year, 2018, 2019, because that would be before the pandemic. And I'd like to see where we were at there as to how we progressed because even in 1920, that's when the pandemic started. So it would be interesting to see that year before that.
Through the President to Member Marsette, absolutely, we'll do that when we have the spring. This was for the fall. So these fall grades were pre-pandemic. But to your point, this spring, we will need to do that because it'll be two springs of learning. And if we can recall, our kids as of March will be out at the secondary level for a year. And that's why it's really imperative to return them. But absolutely, we will, really, it'll be interesting look from the spring initially, the, you know, what happened to getting up on this last semester. Really, the pandemic happened in the midsemester, right at spring break, which is exactly the midpoint. So we'll get those for you as we move forward with the second semester grades. These were, we waited so long to see if the incompletes would get done, but we still have till today, actually. The second was the opening day to really work through some of those. So we will have those updated for you as well.
Can I just, one more follow-on? And this is no secret, I've shared this with Dr. Bishop. But, you know, and I don't know how many board members are aware of this, but, you know, when we talked about sending our middle school and high schoolers, that small group back, my understanding, if you look at everything that was published, it said in-person learning. What I've discovered is that a lot of that is kids sitting in classrooms on Zoom with no in-person learning taking place, that it's babysitting. Some schools are doing a great job. And I know that some schools probably think they're doing the best job they can. But as a student, I'm very interested in seeing what our grades look like in those particular situations. I will say that I've heard from students that said they feel like they're being punished because they are required to sit in a classroom, be on Zoom, and that they are not responsible enough to, and some of these probably, you know, maybe they need that, but it's not doing what we, what I as a board member had expected from our schools. I know that the direction might have been different. But I just, I just want to put out there as a board member, I am really kind of disappointed in how we are providing school in person to our students who really need that interaction and need that in-person, not just babysitting. And some of our schools are doing it exactly like as a board member, I thought it would happen, and some are not. So I guess I just wanted to share that because I think that's very important for the reason we went back to school.
Through the President to Member Marsette, I do understand and I take responsibility for that. I was the one sharing the plans. My notification wasn't deep enough, I guess. I need to really go more granular with the details to be able to share accurately. We do have, many schools did create new classes and do that. And we'll continue to work with them really to benefit children. And I take that as feedback and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, I just, Dr. Bishop, I just wanted to go back to grades six, seven, and eight. And just tell me if I'm correct in my thinking. I know you, I think I know the answer. You pulled the data, but you pulled the data before kids had an opportunity to make up those Ds and Fs. Is that correct?
Six, seven, and eight.
Six, seven, and eight, yes.
Yes. Not, so the ones that are, there are some kids that have, will move to summer school. And those are in six, seven, and eight. We may not see theirs, but for the high school as well, there were a few incompletes, yes. And the request was for the monitoring now. And it just so happened that the, today ended up being it. It's not a significant number to where I believe it would sway too much. But that is correct, that February 2nd was kind of this day that high schools pushed out as well. Primarily for the middle school, though, they really, as I reported, I had reported before that they're, right before Christmas, when I reported on the first quarter grades, that they were working towards capturing the students and really not allowing the failure to redirect and put in extra inputs. And some of those inputs would be summer school. So that's six, seven, and eight. I would say that we will remain to have that open and as Is until they finish. I don't think we will see failures. However, nine, 10, 11, and 12, there were instances where students were given incompletes and the call date, if you will, is today. So I will present, if the data changes significantly, I can re-present those. But you are accurate in your assumption.
Okay. And so where are the incompletes on here? They're not showing on this chart, right?
No, they are not. They're basically a null grade. So they're not, they don't have value, but we know how many are in that category.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Mitchell.
So staying on this chart, I'm just curious. They, it looks like in grades six, seven, and eight, they, there are more Ds, but the Fs went down significantly. Are those teachers just giving the students the benefit of the doubt?
Member Mitchell, it's just what we were talking about with Member Bellamy, that these students received an I and incomplete. The middle school was very, after the first quarter, very interested in meeting their kids' needs and the fact that some, they just knew they weren't, you know, whether it was not having someone home with them, not having the best equipment, not, you know, the bandwidth or the computers are not really feeling comfortable enough to turn the video on in their home, that the middle school assigned any student that was in trouble to fail because they weren't participating and learning, that they assigned an I and they're going to continue to work with them through summer school and after-school programs. And again, it really wasn't based on giving a child a grade or a no grade at a certain period of time. The interest shared with me was really in capturing the learning that needed to take place for them to be successful next year. And of course, at the high school, it's very different because grades are related to credits. Credits are statutory as well as policy. That's why the two different approaches were taken.
And then the other, so the few Fs that there are are people who, kids who were engaged, who did have their stuff on and just didn't earn.
Correct, for whatever reason. And they may not want to move on and they might have done, you know, decided to be finished in six, seven, and eight.
The question I actually had wanted to ask was the chart, I think, a couple before this, where you have the number, yeah, this chart for the secondary. So our secondary, I don't know if it's true, our middle school students didn't do the quarter thing, did they? Where they do three classes a quarter? It was just the high school students?
No, it was all of secondary.
It was all of secondary, okay. So this does count both quarter, both quarters worth of classes. I'm just trying to understand why the N is so much bigger for the previous year because in theory, it should be the same for both years, right? Because you're either taking six classes for an entire semester last year or you're taking three classes per quarter this year, which adds up to six for the semester.
And that would be correct for semester, but we offered seven classes to middle school students in prior years, if you recall, and with a grade, so it's a mark. We, you know, assign more marks for reporting back on progress in prior years, as well as it's much fewer students. But this is, to your point, this does represent a six-period schedule because we had three and three. It's just that significantly at the middle school, that changed as well as in the enrollment.
So do you have any idea what, I mean, we went from 158,000 marks to 84,000 marks. How many of those are attributed to the one fewer, one-seventh fewer classes at the middle school level? I mean, I would think that's not a huge part of that.
We can look into that, but there are also the students who did not get a mark or the I. They're not included, so.
Were there more kids who went virtual at the secondary level than at the primary level?
I can get you the data. I would like to be accurate. We'll get you those numbers.
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering. It just seemed like a huge discrepancy.
Virtual grades are not in this. These are just for our schools that are on the same schedule with grading, which would be our eight large high schools and 10 large middle schools.
So a fair amount of that difference could also be the kids who went to virtual.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Thank you.
And to note that if kids in middle school don't engage in the summer school or other programs that they're offering, that they're doing now, those Is would revert to Fs at that time, at summertime. So we're trying to keep kids engaged as much as possible.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. So just, I've tried looking at our policy before on what defines a passing grade at D. I know some school districts have it at C. I know, I think even some states might have it, or maybe it's just so popular in that state. What, because whatever you set the line at, you know, it's going to be a bunch really close right beneath it. So if it said C, you're going to have fewer Ds and Fs, you know, or in theory. So do you, do you know off the top of your head where that comes from?
I would guess it's very traditional, but I'm going to defer. It's probably 60 to 69%. Is that our Ds?
Yeah, but where does that, is that in, is that a school board administrative regulation? Is that a school?
It's in administrative regulation. And we do have some schools that are alternative schools that grade in different ways. For instance, Polaris has a portfolio, and so those were left out as well. If the schools did not follow the traditional sense in the AR, then it was not included in these data set. Member Mitchell, I was just updated that presently, there are more elementary students in virtual than secondary. However, to your point, the students from one year to the next, there are a large portion in virtual anyway and/or other homeschool programs such as Frontier or Family Partnership. So that was also significant.
Thank you.
All right, one last opportunity. Anybody have any questions for Dr. Bishop and her team on secondary grades?
All right. And as always, you can, um, submit questions, uh, to Dr. Bishop through email and she'll be happy to get those answers for you. Moving on next in the agenda, uh, public testimony. I will read a brief statement. "The Board welcomes public testimony. We value public comment as it ensures that we remain aware of public thoughts, ideas, and concerns and informs our decision-making process. There is a one-hour time slot at the beginning of the meeting. Testimony in excess of one hour will be heard at the end of the meeting or may be submitted in writing. Each person will have three minutes to testify. When 30 seconds remain, a time will ring to inform you so that you can finish your sentence. Additionally, it is not our practice that board members answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is your time to speak and our time to listen. The Board will consider all information shared by the public and when deemed necessary, issues raised in testimony will be referred to the administration for follow-up." We have nine people on the list. The first person up, and let me see if she is here. Okay. Uh, Speaker number one is not here yet, so I'm going to move on. Speaker number two on the telephone, Karina Ranella. Are you on the line with us? And Karina, if you can hear us, I believe it is star six to unmute. All right. We will circle back around to Karina and we will try again. Uh, Speaker number three on the telephone, Danielle Kemp. Danielle, are you on the line with us tonight?
All right. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Thank you for joining us.
All right.
You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Um, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Danielle Kemp. I'm a retired Army Combat Officer, uh, teacher here in the ASD and co-chair of the Education Committee, I'm sorry, the, uh, the, the Human and, and Subright Committee of the AEA. Uh, first off, I would like to wish everybody Happy Black History Month and Black Lives Matter at School Week of Action. All right? Uh, remember that black lives, uh, that, uh, Black History is not just, um, you know, Black history, but it is American history to be embraced and celebrated by all Americans. Um, I, tonight I would ask for clarity, uh, from the school board, uh, to answer real some questions here that I have. Uh, online zoomings, I, from what I hear, online zooming stops around February 8th and many families are concerned. I see Facebook posts all the time here. Uh, they're concerned that, for instance, if a class shuts down due to COVID, right? They go back to online zooming, but the kids who chose not to take the risk would still be stuck with virtual. They are completely shut off from their teacher and all their school friends. The majority of kids who would stay home and suffer this inequity, as you know, would be children of color. This wouldn't have to happen though. It's an easy fix. Just keep the Zoom option for our kiddos at home. Not to do this easy thing, you know, would not be good to all our families who cared enough about their health to stay safe at home and share on us, you know, shame on us for not doing such a simple thing that could do so much good. Um, so please, you know, if you could provide clarity on that, I would appreciate that so much. And before I go, uh, I would be remiss if I, if I did not, uh, remember and acknowledge the fallen U.S. Capitol Officer, uh, Snicknick, who currently lies in state at our nation's Capitol rotunda. He died as a result of the violence inflicted upon him by a 21st century insurrectionist lynch mob motivated by racism, white supremacy, and the fear of losing their white privilege. We should not forget, nor should we allow our fellow Americans to forget that infamous day of January 6th. All right. Thank you very much for your time and have a good night.
Thank you. I'd like to go back up to Speaker number two, Karina Ranella. Karina, are you able to join us tonight? Um, Karina, if you can hear us, uh, sometimes if you hang up and then call back in or log out, log in, uh, sometimes that, uh, can help the connection. Um, I will keep an eye out for you as we move forward. Uh, next up, in-person Speaker number four, Ms. Sarah Price. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening. Over the last five months, I have tried to understand why you won't send us back to school and I waited patiently for you to fulfill promises, but I have been met by deception. The main ASD core value is the district will be open, transparent, and accountable to the public. However, as you mislead the community, violate Alaska statutes, and use children for political gain, you fail this. This entire school year, you have told the public that schools are closed for the safety and well-being of our community, but you and I both know this is not true. I was told in October and I was told in January by ASD administrators that the only reason we are not back is because of the teacher unions. So when were you going to tell the public? Or are you expecting parents who work and children who are drowning in homework to do, take the hours required to find that corrupt information? The power given to the superintendent to implement long-term school closure is found in Alaska Statute 14 dot 03 dot 030, which states she can do so for the public health or safety. However, as everyone present knows, we are not back because of the teacher unions. Every major health organization in our own state DHSS has stated schools are safe. So if this is because of the teacher unions, call it for what it is, a strike, and do not exploit the community's concerns of COVID by saying this is for our safety. These actions also violate two other Alaska statutes, but far worse than that, these actions are not victimless. Not only have failure rates doubled, not only is absenteeism shocking, not only has there been discrimination, but children are suffering. Around our state, mental health issues and depression have skyrocketed in the adolescent community. Yet you have chosen to keep students in middle and high schools in idle, in isolation, where no one can tell if by text or by Zoom camera, if they are suffering, and many are. You have taken away students' lives for the last year. You have made us hate school and as a result, many students have to be the one to bring our friends out of the darkest of places. We are children. What are you doing to us? As board members, you do not represent the teachers. You are meant to represent the needs and wants of students and parents. Eighty percent of families have consistently chosen to go back to school. That is what we want. If you do not want to stand up for your constituents, you should resign and allow a community member to fill your position who is willing to be a leader, even when times get tough. This is no longer about public safety. This is about choices made by this administration. This is choosing to keep students out of school, knowing what they must endure alone, simply because you are afraid of what someone may say is despicable. It is time to be honest with our community. Enough is enough. Send us back to school.
Uh, next up, Speaker number five, Noreen Price. Thank you for coming in. You've got three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening. I am a proud parent, a voter, and a taxpayer. I am disappointed in the administration's decision to not send middle and high school children back to in-person school until mid-March. The recommendations of the CDC, World Health Organization, DHSS, and pediatricians all over the world are clear. The risk of children contracting, transmitting, or developing serious COVID health conditions is extremely low. I won't belabor the supporting statistics or the serious consequences of your decision to close in-person's learning. You know them. What I don't understand is the why. The school board and teachers have been stating for many months that they too want kids back in school, but not until it is safe. Safe. How do you find that word? Since 1998, over 1,500 children and adults have died in school transportation-related accidents. In 2017-18 school year, we had over 186 pediatric deaths due to influenza B, all horrible and tragic. Yet teachers did not demand that schools be shut down for safety. There have actually been fewer pediatric deaths in 2020 than in the previous years. Kids are at home, fewer car accidents, drownings, injuries. Should we then keep children cloistered inside forever for their safety? Of course not. They need to be in school and it is you who have shut down schools, not the virus. I work as a safety professional in the transportation industry. Safety is never the goal of an organization. It is a value that is prioritized while achieving one's goals. The risk assessment process calls for reevaluating decisions and making appropriate adjustments when the risk level has changed, and it has. Most of the nation is back to school since September. My daughter will be out of school for a whole year. This is an unacceptable precedent. There will be more viruses. Two of my teenagers worked as essential employees in stores at the height of the pandemic. They probably packed their groceries. Why won't the teachers support them? I have lived all over the world in this great country and now I enjoy the life in Alaska and I do so appreciate the rugged individualism, the resiliency, and diversity of the people. But this unfounded government response of fear is not in line with Alaska values. I cannot help with my family's favorite movie, Groundhog Day. If you haven't seen it, you must. Life now, like the movie, seems like the same thing every day, over and over, devoid of smiles, human contact, sports, social gathering, and inspiring education. Roll out of bed, sit on a computer, do homework, repeat. The protagonist in the movie, Phil Connors, was able to figure out what his real goals in life were and he learned much from his many mistakes and eventually woke up to a new and better day. I ask you that you be bold, put children's education first, work for the families of Anchorage, not the teachers' unions, and maybe we'll wake up to a better day before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. I am looking on my list of callers and I do not have Speaker number six or seven. So while we're on a roll, let's do Speaker number eight, Mr. Ethan Jennings. He is in the boardroom. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, school board members. Let me start by saying that one of my biggest fears of graduating early was that I was going to regret it. However, after the decisions this school board has made, I regret absolutely nothing. Since the beginning of this school year, I have watched as my friends and other students have struggled with online school. School was once an appreciated place and now has been transformed into a toxic environment because of your choices. Students are, what students were and still are, forced to sit and stare at technology all day and faces have been replaced by black screens. Along with a poor education, students across the district have become poor, have become stressed more than ever because of the failing virtual school system you have created. And also, it's also clear that the mental health of students in this school district have been put at the bottom of the list of your priorities. It makes me sick to think that you know you are doing this to the students. Yet you sit back and do nothing and they still suffer. And the part that is most disappointing is that you have deceived the public into thinking this was for their safety. As I watch, as I watch firsthand, as the love for school is stripped away from students, I become infuriated because this administration could have acted with courage and stood up to the teachers who are unwilling to do their job. The Anchorage School District is entrusted to provide an education for 40,000 students, but you have thrown most of them to the curb. It is quite clear that you're all too scared to stand up to the teacher unions, use the excess, use the excuse of student safety to hide from their jobs of providing real education. You are letting the teacher unions walk all over you. Your job is to protect students and act with their best interest in mind, not to turn your back on students and neglect them. While you neglect students in this district, there are teachers who are getting paid to deliver and provide a pathetic education to their students. Now whether it's you, now whether it's you as board members want to admit that, that is up to you, but don't sit on this board and claim you're doing what's best for students when it is quite clear to me and many others that claiming to withhold reopening schools for the safety and well-being of students is just a sad excuse for your failure to stand up for what is best for your students. I am not here to ask you to reopen schools. That is already happening in March. I'd like to inform you that you have failed the students in this district by acting out of fear and self-interest. Along with making terrible decisions, you cannot even implement what you are, what you tell the community, what you tell the community you are going to do. I remember when this school board said that students who failed classes after first semester would be able to return to in-person school early. However, I know students that were never offered the option to return to in-person school for extra help that was promised. So not only have this administration developed a school system in which students cannot possibly learn, but you now pick and choose who gets to go back to in-person school based on the beliefs of you. Though there is slight hope for students in March, this terrible situation could have easily been avoided with the decision to reopen schools months ago. Regardless of what happens for the rest of the year, it will be remembered by students and community members that you, from the start of this school year, that you, from the start of this school year, you set your students up to fail.
Thank you. Like to go back up to Speaker number two, Karina Ranella. Karina, if you're able to hear us, it'll be star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your patience.
Three minutes, go ahead.
I, great, thank you. I appreciate your patience. I was unable to mute my, um, speaker all those times. Um, so I, um, yeah, my name is Karina Ranella and I have been a mental health clinician in and around Anchorage for 20 years. Um, for 10 of those years, I worked with adolescents and I am calling to give testimony in support of the anti-racism policy that is being proposed. I really strongly feel that all of the youth in Anchorage will benefit if the school board will adopt this policy, not just people of color. And that's it. That's my testimony. So I appreciate the time. I appreciate your consideration and I really appreciate that this is, um, this is an issue that's being considered. I, I, I realize that there are a lot of other important issues that are requiring time and attention and I, I believe this one is also a very strong, uh, a very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, going down the other way, Speaker number seven, who just joined, Connor Johnson. Connor, can you hear us? Try one more time, star six.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
All right. I just wanted to thank y'all for the opportunity to speak. I'm not going to take long, but I just want to tell y'all like the experience those I've noticed in like my, myself and my friends. I've noticed that like everyone, since we've been out of school, we've all been like depressed, not happy with our lives. We feel like, a lot of people feel like they're like worth nothing because we're just staying at home, not doing anything. And we're, our friendships are like falling apart. There's nothing to do. And I've had seven people since, I want to say September, come to me and tell me they want to die. I've, I've had to save seven lives from being taken from suicide because they're just staying at home, depressed, not able to go to school, no social life. And it's sad. It upsets me. I've seen failing grades, people that are normally 4.0 students are having Fs and it's sad seeing that their education is going to waste. And it's just like, it makes me shake. And I, it's just tough being at home all day. That's all I have to say.
Thank you for your testimony tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, Speaker number nine, Elizabeth McGee. Elizabeth, are you on the line tonight?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can. Thank you for joining us. You have three minutes and the floor is yours.
Good evening, Superintendent Bishop, school board, and community members. Happy School Counseling Week 2021 to all my colleagues that work so hard each day to serve students, staff, and families. It is an honor to share our week during Black History Month as well. My name is Elizabeth Congdon McGee and I'm a proud school counselor at Waley School. I just want to share. I just want to share with you all the important work that I do in my role as a school counselor and how I run my program. My goal is to spend 80% of my time with students. Last year, prior to COVID hit in our city with full force, I had 633 requests and visits with students. This did not include my classroom visits or check-in and check-outs with students. This year, with face-to-face start at my school on January 19th, I started with my data again. For the last 11 contact days, with a shortened day of 5.5 hours of student contact, I have had 15 requests and spent over 40 hours with students in my office and with classroom visits. This does not include my time greeting kids when they come and seeing them off at the end of the day. The rest of my time is spent collaborating with teachers in IEP meetings and working with families. Since we started back with students, I have also made an effort to greet every staff prior to students arriving to try to brighten a day so that we start off on a positive foot. As the district plans to reentry for all levels, it is imperative that the school counselor is able to partner with our administrators to build the culture in our schools. We as school counselors are solution-focused. That is what we do individually and as a group. We want the best for our students, families, staff and community. I am proud to be a colleague to some of the best school counselors in the state. This year, National School Counseling Week concentrated on being all-in. Here are my all-ins for the first two days. Day one, I'm all-in for students because I believe each and every student I work with will have the potential to do great things. Day two, I'm all-in for professional development because I believe in being a lifelong learner. I have participated in many conferences and trainings and bring something new out of it to help improve my program. I am honored to say that the Alaska School Counselors State Conference is happening this week, 40th and the 49th, as it represents our relationship as a charter with the American School Counselors Association for 40 years. We are privileged to have Lisa Konecki, a great friend from Wisconsin, who is the author of Being an All of the and Inclusive Alley, which is talking about advocating and supporting equity for all students. Nick Hansen, our very own Alaska Gladiator, and Carolyn Stone, author of Ethics and Law in School Counseling, keeping us updated on ethics as our three keynotes, with many breakouts to learn more about school counseling and improve our program. In closing, I want to share just a few things that school counselors do to help students. We help them learn from mistakes, deal with grief and loss, problem solve, make positive behavior choices, manage emotions, normalize feelings, find careers that match their personality, process events and emotions, set goals, make and keep friends, develop coping skills, improve study skills, connect with outside resources and change thinking patterns. We do so much more than scheduling when we are allowed to do the job we are trained in. Thank you so much for your time. Happy Black History Month and School Counseling Week.
Thank you so very much. At this time, that concludes all of our public testimony for the evening. Just want to remind board members and the public that there is written testimony out on the board docs that's tied to our agenda, which we encourage everybody to go out and read as well, so the written voice is heard. Next up in the agenda is the superintendent update. At this time, I would like to turn it back over to our superintendent, Dr. Dina Bishop.
Thank you, Madam President. And I want to give a shout out to Member Donley. I think I'm going to do a very, very short, nice superintendent report. At our last retreat with the board, it was really discussed to keep on business. And I want to share that I have a habit of good things and going on and on, but I want you to know we're going to continue to share good things in ASD Inside about our staff and ASD Connect with our community of all the good things. But at these meetings, we're going to stay to business. I'm just going to present a little bit of data that you may be interested in, just simply the school start by numbers. And I just want you to know that I'm actually more comfortable with numbers. That was my degree. I'm a math teacher, so this is good for me. I'm back to my roots. So just so you see, elementary students, as of yesterday, we, this is just an odd number, all the schools, everything added up to 8,000 students in the elementary schools that came back, exactly. So that is not a rounded number. That's actually precise. And the school numbers do vary based on the grade levels at the schools. But we are 1,000 up from last week as we know that some schools took a different, a faster roll-in phase. But all elementary, pre-K through eight in some schools, six in some, depending on the number of grade levels you have in your school, are returning by the eighth, which is next week. So we look to see that number jump. As of today, in secondary, we had 1,757 students enrolled in face-to-face and in attendance today was about 1,200. So about 500 of them are out there enrolled but not attending yet. But we look to increase that again with those supports that are needed. A question really was asked, how many staff then? And if you look as of February 8th, there's going to be about 3,200 staff working directly with students. And as of March 16th, when we all come back, it'll be almost our entire enrollment, employment, if you will, roles, 5,700, almost 5,800. I wanted to share that the staff that work directly with students include but are not limited to all of those different functions in our district. And again, it's importance of a classroom and learning and the relationship, but it takes us all to really have schoolwork, especially we've learned that during the pandemic times. And I wanted to share some of these numbers because of the number of classrooms back, over 8,000 students. And a board member asked me about the news and how the news said COVID was in schools and we had to close. And I, we've shared with the board and we hope our public as well. We're very transparent with any COVID cases that we record. And they are of our employees or students. Many of those cases, and I'm going to turn it over to Tom Roth here, aren't even in school yet. So those are recorded cases of people at home as well. But Tom, can you really talk about the other side of the story? When we say a school, there was a case in a school and how tightly we really take a look? Just a couple-minute brief, so the board has a general understanding of that.
Sure, Dr. Bishop. Thanks through the board president, to the board members. And I'm going to ask Ms. Ashley Lolly, our Director for Security and emergency, preparedness to also participate in this. So we've been working on this system really, really since we anticipated return to schools and how the district would respond to cases of COVID in our schools. And clearly, the objective is to keep COVID-19 out of schools. We recognize that that's not a foolproof thing. We know that, you know, we have people coming in that may be symptomatic. So we get after this through vigilance, through quickly identifying risks when they come into schools to do investigations and then to act. Act immediately to mitigate those risks. And then from that, we do contact notification. We communicate and then we give guidance, advice to people who are in fact either confirmed positives or close contacts. And I would tell you, my observation so far is that it's been effective. And to Dr. Bishop's point, you know, that the media, they report facts, but they kind of convey a, that there is a problem of transmission of COVID in schools through their choice of words. I would tell you that that is not the case, has not been the case. I would just offer very briefly some quick trends and then I'll pass off to Ms. Lolly. Parents are being very proactive in reporting when they have students at home that are symptomatic. Most of the reports that we are receiving are of students who are symptomatic or close contacts are positives at home. So they are letting us know that once they find out that, parents are pretty quick to have their students tested. So we get confirmation of whether they're positive or not and that's pretty regular. And then lastly, I would tell you, schools are very vigilant. My observation of just the performance at the school level, our nurses, our administrative staff, they are quick to act, quick to report and then to address issues. So with that, I mean, my quick broad stroke, I'm going to pass off to Ms. Lolly to talk in a bit more detail about the system and her observations.
Who do you think? Can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Yeah, that works. You're probably used to adopting. Yeah, there's one right there. Okay, there we go. So I do want to make it clear that we track all cases for ASD. So it's not just for students that are in person, students that are in virtual, students that are learning online right now, not in person. And it is self-reported cases. So we do depend on families and staff to share that information with us. We currently have eight classrooms closed. That's a combination of positive cases in classrooms and not having sufficient staffing for some other classrooms. So it is a combination of both of those. And to give you some statistics, we have currently 36 staff and students positive out of 47,464 total. So that's less than 1% that are currently positive right now. Of the current cases that we're tracking right now, 58% of those are for symptomatic individuals. So not positive, not close contacts. And then for our closed symptomatic cases, so ones that are not currently symptomatic right now, they were symptomatic in the past, but it does give us some good data for what we're tracking. 64% of those symptomatic came back negative. 28% were either not tested or refused testing or they never followed back up with us. So a majority of what we're tracking is really those kids in school who have symptoms or staff who have symptoms. But over 90% of those are either coming back negative or they don't follow up with us, so they stay out of school for 10 days. But that is really the bulk of what we are tracking. We're tracking absolutely everything in the schools. It is a lot, but the whole intent is that as soon as we have a case that precipitates action being taken, we're on top of it. I think on Monday, we had almost 200 cases come in. Most of those were symptomatic, but we never go to bed without closing out every single case for that day. So never more than 24 hours before we know a case and before we close it out and provide them a return date of when they can come back in the buildings.
Thank you, Ashley. And I just wanted to reassure the board that when COVID is in our community, we know that it has the potential to get in our schools. Our job is to act swift, have systems set up to address. And again, like Tom Roth said, the schools are amazing at really responding as well. So I just wanted to share that and my report is concluded.
Thank you. Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. So I had a question about secondary return. I remember last summer and early following, you're talking about the design model of secondary instruction. Was that so that they could come in and out? Like the purpose was to be able to be flexible? Because sometimes you have to close for two weeks, even now in elementary, we'll see some of those. So I'm confused on, you know, we have these wonderful low infection rates, really high vaccination rates. Everybody's doing everything so well. Are there secondary schools? Like I had an elementary school this week and they're like, don't come this week, come visit the next week because we're having our whole school come back early. Like they were ready to come back earlier. Are there secondary schools in that same situation where they're like, no, we have this plan to be flexible, to come online and in person and they want to do it before fourth quarter? Are we anticipating anything like that?
That's a great question. I haven't had any requests from secondary to start earlier than proposed as we did with elementary. They really pushed the envelope sometimes too much. That's where we had to really make sure our systems were in place. But I'll defer to Dr. Stock about secondary and the impetus of their programs and understanding of when they can return or if they requested. Maybe some of our smaller schools have, I'm just not sure.
At this time, we haven't had any formal requests from secondary to step forward. There's still continual debates at our level about trying to get more secondary students in in the small group. And the whole purpose of the phase-in was to bring in more and more students and prove the safety of our mitigation. We have a, we have kind of a long chain here with the larger numbers at the high school. And right now, we're having a slow startup at getting, you remember how it started with elementary? And I think people forget how many raucous debates and how many false starts and starts and stops we had with elementary until we got to the place where we are. It started with those small group reading classes, you may remember. And that was only seven schools. And then what we found is that the teachers that were doing that came back and said, hey, that was actually, that was good and it was safe. It felt good. More teachers volunteered than more and it spread. We're hoping the same thing will happen with secondary. But as Dr. Bishop stated earlier, it's a little bit of a slow startup. We only had 4.7% return. We're up into that 10, 11% now. But our goal was to at least get to 20 quickly and then see how much we could grow it. Because if we can't get students in the door, we can't prove to families that it's safe to come back to school. So I don't know if Dr. Johnson wants to represent secondary and address that tonight, but that would be my response in my meetings with them. And if Dr. Johnson has anything specific to that she would like to provide details, I would call on her.
Thank you, Dr. Stock. Through the president, to Member Hildy. At this point, our focus has really been like Dr. Stock mentioned, to really increase our attendance at secondary. The one complication that we really have at secondary around kind of coming into the middle of a quarter is a lot of our scheduling needs at secondary as well. It's not like just one classroom. They have to get scheduled and come in. And the way we've got it structured right now with small groups, we're really trying to help our kids who are really disconnected, failing classes, maybe not engaged entirely. And so that's been our big push right now. We're quickly shifting at this point into bringing our kids back fourth quarter. The one limitation that is out there as well is within the EO-18, there is a 50% capacity rule. And for our secondary schools in particular, with just really large populations, that's also tricky. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you. Next up in the queue is Board Member Bellamy.
Yes, thank you. I just have a two questions, Dr. Bishop. And you may or may not have any, you know, a response tonight. So is it possible to just, I get two questions over and over again. One is the, why can't, why can't we continue to Zoom? And I know some kids, some schools are, but why can't we just continue to Zoom for those parents who are not, and kids who are not yet ready to come back? I get that question a lot. And then the other question is, is, are we tracking? I know we had 8,000 kids at elementary show up. How many, how many kids have not shown up yet? Do we have, are we tracking that?
That we're expected to show up?
Yes, that we're expecting.
We can get those numbers for you of who was absent. We have had regular absences similar to regular years. But the head count today was 8,000. So I can get out of how many were expected for you. I will put that in the board connect. And I'd really like Mike Fleckenstein, if you could share a little bit about the simultaneous zooming, just the capacity level, but also Dr. Stock as well in the ask of, it was really working through the School Start Task Force.
Right.
And basically, a request and discussion by the teacher representative in regard to doing two jobs at once. And so I'll turn that over to Dr. Stock.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So the first challenge we have is that parents don't really want to just do Zoom. They want to keep their same teacher and Zoom. That's really the human connection that teachers have built. Even in the virtual remote environment, they've got to know their teacher. Even in the virtual remote environment, they've got to know their teachers, and they want to keep them. The challenge is, we're going back to school. And so the challenge is, teachers can't do both simultaneously. Now, some have said, "Well, can't you just turn on a webcam and just let it run?" Well, you have FERPA issues, you have other kinds of issues. We also have issues with bandwidth. And we'll let Mr. Fleckenstein tackle that one. But there's, we have technology issues. We don't even have enough webcam. You can't just put a laptop in the middle of a room and then let it run. And even if you could, we won't have the bandwidth for every single classroom in this district to be doing that same time. So we have a lot of challenges. So teachers want to keep their same teacher, but they're going to be teaching kids soon. So some schools have done, we've let people be innovative and creative on that level. We do have a handful of schools that may have figured out an alternative way inside with their staffing. Some of those are, might be title schools that have extra staff available and extra technology they purchased over the years or are purchasing now. So there are some one-offs where people have figured some things out. And we've been willing to encourage that if they can serve their communities better. So that would be my response to the question, "Why can't we just, why can't we just stay home and Zoom?" Well, because your teacher will be teaching with kids in the room. And it's not the same as just turning on a webcam. We have some short-term solutions for those who are quarantining. So when students are out for a couple of weeks because of a case in a classroom, we're keeping those Canvas course shells current, and people are able to go out and get at least some content, some videos, keep up with their homework, do those things. So that would be my answer. And if any further things on the technology, we could refer to Mr. Fleckenstein.
Well, it's exactly as I explained, so I thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up in the queue. Margot, did you want a technology answer?
Oh, no. Dr. Stock's response was fine. I just needed that to be public because it comes up over and over again. And I just want, wanted to have the opportunity for people listening to understand why that is not the simple solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up in the queue, I've got Board Member Marseth.
So one of the things I wanted to point out, too, when we talk about attendance at our elementary schools is when I talk to principals, several of the schools I visited, what they believe, and I think probably is true, is a lot of these schools are walking schools, they're not bus schools. And so a lot of those younger students are actually being walked to school by the older students. So when our third to sixth graders come back, I think you will see more of our kindergarten, first and second graders come back. So I think there will be a real increase in that. The other thing, I guess, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, and I know that you're looking at this, Dr. Bishop, but we have five weeks, I think about five weeks before spring break. Do we have any estimate or have our schools provided us? I know there's lots of room. I know there's a capability of doing that. Of maybe bringing back some of these students or asking for students that would like to come back?
Through the President to Member Marseth, do you mean in secondary? I believe the opportunity has been there. We haven't had those requests. And again, it might be the complexities of the schedules. Would that be a fair answer?
Yeah. Yeah. I just always believe where there's a will, there's a way. And maybe we just don't always see the way. And not speaking to anyone in particular, just my comment.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Donley.
Thank you. Superintendent, once we're back full-time in our secondary schools, how many hours a day will the schools be? And how, versus how many hours they would normally be in a normal year?
Thank you, Member Donley. Through, to Member Donley, through the President. We have, similar to elementary school, we have a general child day is six and a half hours. And it is going to, is that correct? Six and a half hours, and it's going to five and a half hours. And the same is true for secondary. And Dr. Stock can share those times with you.
Thank you. President, to Member Donley. The general reason for that is that we have contractual language with regarding to preparation time. And you may remember that when we created the schedules we did, you remember the whole goal of trying to reduce the amount of interactions in a school, if we could, so that we can do contact tracing and we can keep students at least somewhat with a cohort group. Or you may remember, Dr. Bishop used the word "the bubble", trying to keep students as best we can. In a high school, for example, the three-period day is to reduce the amount of interaction and class changes to amount of passing periods where students would be interacting. And so when we do all that, when you create that and you take out that art teacher, music teacher in the elementary and make them assigned to a cohort to help break classes into smaller groups and to avoid so much interaction, what that does is it takes away the teacher's preparation period, which we are contractually required to give. And teachers need it. That's not really in question. So what we're doing is all teachers' planning periods are now at the end of the day. Students leave, and then teachers have their time for planning. And that's how we're doing that.
All right, next up in the queue, Board Member Hildy.
Thank you. Dr. Johnson mentioned the EO, and that was another issue I'd seen with two elementary charter schools, the class sizes in the EO. And my concern is, is maybe in the planning, they, it was that, you know, the average class size was used in the calculations. And I'm not suggesting what health officials should do, but I'm just wondering if they have that information on the impacts of all our schools? And that, as, you know, somebody mentioned, you know, we reevaluate decisions when risk levels change, right? So I don't know if that's just still hanging out at 50% because that's like absolutely, or maybe it's because they kind of thought it was working for everybody? I just wanted the status of that.
Through the President to Member Hildy. That's really a great conversation. And we have continually worked with our health department to share what we foresee as being a problem, as well as sharing the concern in charter schools. They request more data, so we can provide more data for them. It is in a classroom 50% capacity of the building code of the classroom. And so we've been able to really move in in some of our more traditional rooms. But sometimes there's different, schools that have had flexibility, they've been able to move classrooms into others. I have communicated with the mayor in regard to the case counts, you know, going down and the vaccine going up, that if these could be reconsidered. And she did share with me that they are looking forward to hearing our data about school-in-school and that perhaps, beginning of March, if she announces another order, that that could be included, even if it is just about schools. And so it is on their radar. We're having lots of conversations, and we're happy to share all of our data. Because, again, as shared by Tom Roth, it's been a success. The honesty of parents and the swiftness of staff has been impressive. And with the goal of keeping our schools open, and so I appreciate that. So very diligently being worked on. We haven't received the answers that we've wanted yet, but we continue to work with them and demonstrate efficacy in the system. Thank you. Not seeing any other hands up in the queue. We will go ahead and move on to our next agenda item, which is the Consent Agenda. And Madam Vice President, when you're ready.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda, consisting of memorandum, ASD memorandum number 81, which is our personnel report, and the regular session minutes for December 1st, 2020.
Do I have a second? Second, thank you. Katie, if you could please do a roll call vote, starting with our student representative. Emily?
Yes.
Member Mitchell?
Yes.
Member Marseth?
Yes.
Member Holloman? Member Hildy?
Yes.
Member Donley?
Yes.
Vice President Bellamy?
Yes.
President Vicalis?
Yes.
And the Consent Agenda passes with seven yays and zero nays. In an odd twist, we have no action items. However, we have a big list of non-action items. I know that we were, Member Hildy, were you raising your hand? Yeah, I just wanted to pull number four. Four, okay. And I believe we're also going to, Member Marseth? I believe we should pull number, where is it? Two. Okay. Member Mitchell?
I'd like to pull item number six.
All right. Any other requests from board members? All right, not seeing any. We've got items two, four, and six on the non-action items list that we will go ahead and pull the first one up. Item number two, that's going to be our six-year CIP. And I'll kick it off with, to Dr. Bishop. Thank you, Madam President. And I'm going to defer to Tom Roth to share the information, as well as able to answer any questions.
So if I can get the host to bring over Mr. Tom Fenicep and Mr. George Vicalis from Attendees to Panelists. So, through the President, to the board members. So what the administration is doing is bringing forward the six-year capital improvement plan to the board for action on the 16th of February. By way of background, we did, we did bring the six-year plan, specifically Tables 1 and Table 2, that we did introduce to the board for discussion. And what that does is allow the Capital Planning and Construction Department, based on feedback from the board, to take the proposal to the Planning and Zoning Commission for consideration and for them to render a recommendation to both the school board and to the Assembly. So where we are right now is we are, we are bringing the six-year plan to the board for non-action during this meeting. We are certainly prepared to discuss in detail anything that is on the six-year plan. This six-year plan upfront really is a continuation of the six-year plan that was presented to the board last year for approval. The only difference is that this is one year advanced. So in year six, 2026, represents a new list of projects. Those are primarily preventive maintenance. There are many roof replacements, as an example. I've got Mr. Fenicep and Mr. Vicalis. Again, we're happy to entertain any questions from board members specific to the plan itself. We're also happy to discuss the criteria that went into the evaluation and the preparation. I would, I would submit that this has had significant due diligence. And as was mentioned at the previous meeting when we did discuss the six-year plan, COVID-19 has had some very significant impacts on enrollment. And we recognize in that context that there's a lot of unknowns. We don't know what, what the return is going to be at the next academic year, as well as in ensuing years. We are very much cognizant of many other factors that play into this. We do believe that with regards to this, this year, this process, the district is not going to put a bond proposition on the April ballot. We have a two-year bond that was passed in April of last year, that this body, this board, will have the opportunity to, to review in detail. This time next year, a, what will likely be a significantly modified six-year plan that could portend other decisions or recommendations that would come to the board. So we acknowledge that. We acknowledge this is a status quo. But there's a reason for it. It has been collaborated with and, in cooperation with the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, as well as, as mentioned, the Planning and Zoning Commission. So again, I'll pause, and we'll happily entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you. Member Marseth, you had pulled the items, I'll give you first.
So, thank you, Mr. Roth. Having been on that committee, I know that this can change quite a bit, given different factors. And enrollment, of course, is certainly a consideration and where we might need to move students. But another consideration is, you know, we have just heard the real estate market is booming, and it's booming, but there are no houses out there, as many of you might know if you're looking for a home. And so we're going to be seeing more construction this coming year. We're seeing homes built up in Bear Valley, up off of DeArmen. There's going to be, I think there's 100 lots up there now that they're looking to build. Of course, we've got the subdivision there off of Sand Lake. So there, there will be a lot of factors that will probably influence our decision on this capital budget. So thank you.
Did any other board members have any comments or questions on the six-year CIP? Member Donley?
My only comment, I just want to put on the record, I continue to oppose building two new schools. I think they're going to be incredibly expensive. I think the taxpayers of Anchorage are not going to entertain this very well. I think the bond money, where the design for Inlet View was, was mixed in with the earthquake repairs, was a really unfair proposition to put before the voters. And I don't think it represents the true intent of the voters because many people like me voted for the bonds because of the earthquake repairs, even though I opposed building a new school soon. I think we should really reconsider it all and go back to just doing the repairs that are necessary and not build new schools.
Any other board member comments or questions? Seeing that, we'll go ahead and move on to non-action item number four. This is ASD memorandum 084, pulled by Member Hildy. If you wanted to speak to your...
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure our board members were aware that it was coming up for a vote next week. Talking about, we've been talking about this for a few months now, putting boundary view into our policy beginning in 2022. So you have a year for some population, you know, distribution to work out for school enrollment. And then the boundary view process would begin in 2022 with perhaps adjustments made for 2023. But, you know, but just beginning in 2022 is what the policy says. And then putting it in every 10 years so that we can make sure our capacity is, you know, our facilities are best used, based on, you know, student enrollment. So that's a pretty, pretty significant thing. Anytime we talk about boundary adjustments, it's a very big deal for our community. We haven't had any emails or any awareness. So I'm not sure that people are really aware of it. I've been bringing it up at community councils. I think it's a very good thing, but I don't want it to be considered to be a light thing. So just, just to be aware.
Thank you for bringing that up. I mean, it's always a good reminder that our district is guided by, you know, our board policies and, you know, the ARs attached to it. And you pulled item number four, but, you know, three and five are both policy-related. And so, you know, we do want our community feedback, you know, as these things are working its way through our system. So thank you for pulling that. I don't see any other hands up in the queue to speak to memorandum 084. So we'll go ahead and move on to item number six, ASD memorandum 086, which is our preliminary budget. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Bishop. Thank you, Madam President. Our Chief Financial Officer, Jim Anderson, as well as our Senior Director of Budgeting, as well as Dr. Stock, our chief, our Deputy Superintendent, and I will present the overview in a PowerPoint fashion of our budget. This will be posted online, as well as our budget book, so that it can be accessed. In addition, we have these products. So the budget book is a large, you know, as you know, three-inch document. But we also publish a preliminary budget, small booklet that has the aggregate data, very informative, that's quick, easy access. This PowerPoint is primarily the preliminary budget information in PowerPoint terms. So I will move through it and offer any questions. And again, this is a time for our...
So I will, uh, move through it and, uh, offer any questions. And again, this is a time for our public to be informed of the budget and, uh, questions that need to be asked, uh, looked into. We are certainly, uh, able to answer, as well as the school principals, uh, where our students and staff, uh, either work or learn, or, or can also answer some questions at their school site level, uh, always given support from the district office. And so I'll start and, uh, let you know that, of course, we show the timeline at the beginning, and, uh, it does have, uh, in it. This is actually, perhaps an extended third session might be needed. Uh, we, uh, did take out, uh, a survey that we will be doing in regard to, uh, looking at students to understand, um, their... So the budget survey, this is actually not updated. I'm going to share that. But the budget survey in the gold star there, uh, member Mitchell pointed this out for us, so I, I just want to give her credit. It's actually going to be a, really an enrollment survey in April to really determine our full enrollment. But with this, uh, PowerPoint, we can, that was the only change, I guess. Okay, that would be great. We've been doing so many drafts that, uh, our final draft was updated this morning after, uh, our principals met with us and gave us some suggestions and, as well as a, a board member this morning. Is the correct one online? Yeah. From the finance community. We could go to the work session, just pull that up if, um, oh, okay. Katie, you got it? Okay, um. Katie Grant has it, yeah. We definitely want you to have the most updated, which is the one posted on Board Docs. Perfect. No, that's not it either. Must have given you the wrong one. Great time for a stretch break. Since we are on Zoom, if you're at Zoom at home, please stand up and stretch to the ceiling, to the floor. There we go. This is not it either. We're just going to go from this one. Thank you. Uh, but I did want to give credit to member Mitchell where, when we really discussed the budget survey, uh, this year, the community engagement was really about the board's goals and guardrails. And of course, the board is forwarding, uh, what makes sense and what we put our, our, our efforts around and our money towards the budget. And so, uh, the budget survey in its traditional sense isn't being, uh, completed as such. That those, the feedback about the importance of schooling and what we want to see, uh, the budget should support that. That came with community engagement in regard to the goals and guardrails. Uh, but we are doing a survey in regard to enrollment of, uh, those families that have left ASD as well as others that might, uh, not, um, be in between programs of what they'd like, uh, or not like, so that we really have a better sense of our enrollment. Um, in this budget timeline, as you know, uh, today's February 2nd, it's in red. And Anchor School District is the first school district in the state to get a budget, uh, moved out of its school board because ours is due by March 1st by ordinance of our city. In statutory requirements across the state, uh, boroughs and districts have to have them there by April 1st. Uh, but right before April, the Assembly will approve the budget. However, the state legislature is generally still in session. Uh, they're conferring on the governor's budget. Uh, there'll be different bills. And until they actually fund, uh, the government, uh, we technically don't really have a bottom line of our number, and that happens every year. So I just want folks to know that a budget is always a plan of your revenue and expenditures that may change over time. These are the inputs that we believe will be needed, as well as the, uh, expenses. Uh, but certainly as we move towards the summer, we'll have a better idea and bring a revised budget back to the school board. As I mentioned, the goals and guardrails are paramount, uh, to this budget. Slide, please. There we go. And, uh, if we take a look at the goals and guardrails, uh, we've shared in regard to reading proficiency, math proficiency, and of course, life, college, and career readiness. So these were always at the forefront, uh, in finding the priorities that were necessary to meet these goals within our education system. These three represent the vision of the board through its community engagement. The guardrails are the values of the community for which the board has asked that the guidance of management and operating, whether it's the budget and carrying out actions, really stays within these guardrails. And, uh, they're written in this format to understand, um, really, it exactly what a, uh, uh, the word term is. Those are my guardrails in, uh, working with, uh, ASD employees in moving the district forward. The summary that you see is really just a quick synopsis of what our budget does. Last month, or actually in December, month before last, uh, time is flying by. Uh, we provided, uh, a budget to you, a pro forma budget that generally takes, uh, the prior year's expenditures at the same rate as well as revenue forecast and, uh, comes up with a number of a delta of will we be able to make it with the given? If we stayed exactly the same with our metrics, uh, and the revenue assumptions, what is the forecast out of what, um, our budget will look like? At that point in time, we provided quite a large delta. Since that time, S R two funds, which are the federal funds, uh, for recovery for elementary and secondary schools, uh, have come in. Last spring, we were provided the S R one funds. These are S R two. Uh, and they are specifically meant to maximize recovery from COVID-19, to get schools up and going and starting. And we've, uh, taken, uh, that guidance, uh, to place the funds in our school, uh, to be able to get back up on our feet next year. Uh, and in doing so, we do redirect resources to focus on the board goals, as well as utilizing funds to redesign educational supports to focus on learning gaps and outcomes. Uh, and those are really in line with the goals and guardrails again, about the work that is to be done. Today's presentation on goal monitoring, uh, couldn't highlight that enough, that there are gaps, there is lost learning, and that it is, um, upon, um, the responsibility of the school district utilizing its assets of revenue, human resources, our organization, to really serve children in that manner. Uh, it does avoid a reduction in force or what might be called as a riff or pink slipping. Uh, we don't see that as necessary, given the influx of, uh, S R funds, uh, which, uh, will not carry into the future too much. Uh, but we also have our, uh, trend of, uh, folks leaving the district, our natural attrition through retirement, uh, as well as, uh, movements in the district to be about the same rate. So every year we have about, uh, change in about 250 persons. This is metric-based, so there are reductions in this budget, given that the enrollment is lower. So while we may have kept steady the pupert teacher ratio and the inputs into schools, when there aren't, uh, students and the enrollment is lower, certainly the PTR dictates that we will not need as much staff. And so it is real that changes and reductions may happen at schools, but they would be driven by enrollment rather than, uh, other sources. So the enrollment and funding summary, I'll go ahead and turn that over to Jim Anderson.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. This gives a quick snapshot of what we're projecting currently for FY '22. So starting at the top, we expect an, an average daily membership projection of less than what we had last year, but certainly more than what we had this year. Um, we're projecting about 75% of the students who left the district for either a correspondence program, private school, or to another district to return to ASD in the fall. Um, as Dr. Bishop mentioned, we'll do a community enrollment survey in April, um, and potentially update those projections. On the intensive needs student population, we expect it to be very close to what it was last year, which would certainly be an increase over this year. In terms of revenue, we expect a total of about $10 million less than what we budgeted for this year. However, because, um, about 4,500 students left the district, uh, naturally, we, we actually received less revenue than what we budgeted. Uh, we're very fortunate, um, that S R two is approved in December. ASD will get about $50.07 million. Um, and the intent of S R two is really clear in the language, and it's to, uh, maximize the school district's ability to fully reopen K-12 schools and facilitate, um, learning and closing an achievement gap. There's some variables that, uh, that may require a revised budget. That could be any time between May through August, depending on, um, state additional federal money and updated projections. One of those is the lack of historical data to confidently project the number of students that would return, um, since this is the first pandemic in many, many years. Um, S R three funding, there's two draft bills currently in DC. The president's is, uh, about little over twice as much as the, uh, the Senate version, and that's being worked. We expect that to start moving and start coalescing sometime in the March timeframe, so more to follow on that. Um, and again, the legislative timeline in Alaska, they have a lot of, a lot of things on the plate. 19 bills that would directly, uh, potentially affect K-12. And they've got to pass the budget as well. So we'll, uh, keep you updated every time there's a change.
Okay, and as we look through our general fund revenue, this is our comparison from what we adopted in the FY '21 budget to the FY '22 budget. There are a couple of notable things that are going to stand out. The biggest ones being the fund balance. As you can see, we did not use, have a usage of fund balance. In FY '21, we planned to use 8.3 million, uh, due to revenue shortfalls this year and the ongoing pa, cost of the pandemic. Uh, we decided, if, we're projecting that we're not going to have fund balance to use within our board policy. So we didn't include that as a revenue source. The other one you'll see is the $4.1 million increase in local property taxes and the corresponding decrease of about 5.7 million in state foundation funding. Within the foundation formula, we have a component for required local contribution that is based on 2.65 mils of the property values in the municipality. And it's based on, uh, prior, uh, two prior year lags, so that calendar year 2020 taxes or property values are used to calculate out the FY '22 property ta, property tax revenue. From calendar year 19 to calendar year 20, that went up by about 4%. So what you're seeing is an increase of about, it's about $4.4 million of required local contribution that needs to come, that gets shifted from state revenue over to local property taxes. And then it's a little bit lower than 4.4 million in total property taxes because the additional allowable amount we can collect goes down just due to our natural, our, uh, our lower enrollment. You'll also see the other kind of big one that stands out is our interest earnings are projected to go down by about half a million dollars. And that's primarily due to the federal funds rate going down from about 1.75% a year ago to about 0.25% today. Uh, the other thing worth noting would be the federal impact aid, which is, which would have been a fairly sizable decrease, but Congress had passed a federal impact aid coronavirus relief act, which provided or allowed districts to use FY '20 student counts to, for the FY '22 application instead of using FY '21 counts, which we normally would have done. So as Mr. Anderson mentioned, all that comes up to about a $10.5 million projected decrease from FY '21 to FY '22 revenues.
Mr. Stock?
I'm sorry, I was looking at my list to make sure I didn't miss any of the little buckets on there. I can't read them all. So this, um, this slide represents the graphic for how our board, uh, how we will design our work around the board's strategic, uh, goals and guardrails. And so going forward, we will have a group we call the Strategic Plan Task Force. And since we're here talking about budget tonight, I will explain how, how we will work to design that. Each one of those groups, and we kind of call those buckets, but they're working groups. Each one of those groups will have a project manager assigned to it whose task will be to help align and work and do the documentation and create the spreadsheets, build the tools, help us with all the training components and, and kind of serve as that facilitator and glue to keep all those working parts moving forward. This was the design that was used in building through all of the millions of tasks involved with starting school in a pandemic. And so as the years unfolded, we've used this working design. So this group will meet every week as a large group to report out progress from each of those groups. Each of those groups will have a, a lead from the area that it's involved with and a project manager assigned to it. And each of those will then be working groups, and there will be teachers and principals, employees assigned to those groups to help create that, uh, energy and innovation around the initiatives that they're working on. And so the goal is to begin to even do further work to align this district's initiatives with the actual budget, and so that our budget process will be a year-long budget. Currently, our budget process is, is primarily a work to balance it in time to meet all our statutory requirements and make sure that we've met all those, those guidelines and compliance. But we also know that we also need to do a deep dive into whether or not all the things that we're doing, whether they contribute or detract from the board's overall mission regarding student outcomes. So that's the work. This next slide just shows some examples of how the current budget actually includes those things. So, and while this isn't exhaustive, these are just listed as examples of things that are in this budget, such as the new, you know, math curriculum adoptions, uh, other various activities inside those, uh, buckets that explain things inside this budget that align with the strategic plan. So going forward, in closing, there's a, uh, an entire process around which we will work to continue to try to, uh, align our work with the actual goals and guardrails.
So if you look at this slide, um, on the left-hand side, you'll see a list of the state functions. And it starts at the top, the very smallest community services, and works down to where we spend the most money, which is, um, direct instruction. The bars are broken out into blue and brown. There's three blue bars, the rest are brown. And what the brown bars signify is all of those efforts of district resources that go into allowing a school door to open or close every day on time and to be able to provide safe, secure, um, education for our students. And everything from mandatory insurance through maintenance and light bulb repairs. Um, and, and really, the vast majority of it, um, is school staff. If you look down on the bottom, you'll see that we do, in fact, um, still put the vast majority of all of our general fund revenue into salaries and be, benefits. Um, and then you'll see the other items broken out across the bottom.
All right. And next we have, uh, just the snapshot of all levels across our system. Uh, the top chart really demonstrates, uh, especially with the pink, uh, the increase that would have happened given our operational funds. The bottom chart demonstrates the operational funds as well as the S R grant, which keeps... The bottom chart demonstrates the operational funds, as well as the S R grant, which keeps the PTR at a steady pace. To note again, that PTR is not a class cap, it's really a funding mechanism, as well as the S R really did impact that, whereby, had we not had the S R two funds, we would have been looking at 4 million cuts outside of the PTR, at other people in our organization, because our organization, as Jim just shared, is made up of people. But within schools specifically and teachers, this would have really increased the class size by four, or the PTR count. So this is just demonstrating how it was used and what would have been the outcomes had it not been used in this way. We're going to now hit individualing and just go through the staffing allocations at elementary schools, middle and high, and alternative. Again, these are to demonstrate the changes from year to year, and individual schools can be referenced in the larger budget book.
Thank you, Dr. Bishop. So as you can see from this slide, over the last four years, for the board members who have seen them, there was always the list of teachers that were reduced due to enrollment, and then another laundry list of all the other reductions made at schools in order to balance a budget. This year, because we were able to use S R two funds, the only real reduction is metrics-based at our schools. So you'll see at elementary, 38.5 teachers due to projected lower enrollment, and naturally, as we spoke about, when we do the community enrollment survey, that number may change because money follows the student at state and local level. One other change at elementary level, which was briefed during the work session, and I think a little bit earlier, is that Eagle River Elementary and Greening will also be reopening their old new schools this next spring, or this next fall. So we did add in a little bit to reopen Eagle River Elementary. For staff allocations for middle schools, no major significant changes in staffing, some minor metrics-based changes, and overall 5.2 full-time equivalent, which is FTE, for teachers due purely to enrollment. For high school, again, very few changes in terms of metrics-based or non-metrics-based, although there is a reduction in just over three teachers due to projected lower enrollment from this year. If you look at the alternative schools, we look at alternative schools uniquely, because they all have unique missions, they have unique constraints and requirements. And so although we initially do place a metric over it, we really look at what they need to do to be able to do their mission. And ultimately, we only reduce their FTE just over three, similar to the high schools due to lower enrollment. If you look at the school-based changes for next year, I'll just do a few highlights. The 48.4 at the top was due to projected lower enrollment. We've discussed several times in the last few days about the moving teacher FTE over to the S R two grant, after receiving a nod of approval from the state that that was allowable. If you look at the metrics-based programmatic teacher additions of 44, some of that is planning time additions to true up the staff, and the rest would be the health teachers. If you look at the 17.78 metrics-based staff, and that was over all elementary through high school, the vast majority of that FTE was projected lower enrollment for kindergarten. As we do the survey in April, we'll be able to true up those numbers and potentially come back and look at it, and that would be about 14 FTE for kindergarten TAs. No other major big changes. If you look at the charter school changes at the bottom, the vast majority of that money is because family and frontier doubled plus in size this year. We expect them to retain a very strong enrollment in the future. And as a true-up of what we budgeted for this year versus what we project for them next year, they received more money in order to pay out allotments, and they had to hire additional staff. If you look at the special service changes for next year, nothing big and significant other than we shifted five pre-K classrooms into the general fund to guarantee that they had had dedicated funding for next year. Those classrooms are currently in operation today and have been all year, but with the state grant running out and no certainty that there would be additional pre-K from the state, we shifted that into general funds because of the board goal of reading and On the district-wide changes for next year, you'll see some of the bigger items. We did reduce teaching and learning substitutes and addenda as some of the professional development that we thought we would need. We could reduce those costs, and we did add in a little over a million dollars for Ready Math as part of a multi-year implementation. Moving down the list, you'll see that we shifted a lot of the IT personnel and equipment that we needed through this whole first and second semester, everything from home access to Chromebooks, security software, everything else to make sure we could conduct online learning. Moving down the list a little bit, we did make some changes to the district's attrition account. Insurance continues to go up every year. We'll be able to true that up probably about April/May timeframe. It's a bit early for them to give forecasts for next year. And down at the bottom, we're projecting about a $1.8 million deficit for people transportation that will need to be covered from the general fund.
And once again, we present to you in the summary of the big ideas at the 30,000-foot view of what this preliminary budget includes, and as well our next steps in the process of meeting board goals and moving forward, which is on the next slide. So the budget approval, both at the board level as well as assembly, we will take a look at enrollment as well as revenue projections, and the revenue, again, as the legislature is convening and decides its budget, we will confer and get a more solid number on enrollment. We may need to do some revisions, but again, the big piece of this is the task force that has many, many working groups with many, many members, depending on the construct from all of our unions, similar to how we have the school start task force, to give input and decisions made, and meeting our goals for the Anger School District. Thank you. Thank you. So at this time, I'm going to open it up to board members for any comments or questions, and I see that Member Donnelly has his hand raised.
Thank you. See where the budget has at least a million dollars for the Ready Math curriculum implementation? I believe we have five schools that are going to continue to use Saxon math. Will we be providing them with the equal funding per school to be able to replace their Saxon math curriculum?
I can answer that. We do do that, and it's not necessarily per book, but to your terms, equal. Because of the ability to fund and in a large scale, you know, the cost, we do provide some support to be able, so it might not afford everything, but it would be at like support at the district level. So yes, materials at special mission schools, alternative schools, we do support that with adoptions that go forward.
Can I get a report that shows what that amount will be?
Yes, we can do that.
Thank you. I had one additional question, Madam President, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Several years ago, the board made a decision to change middle school so that the teachers there had two planning periods instead of just one. And I was wondering how the fiscal impacts of that are reflected in this budget? And I see where the class size is the same as the higher grades, but if we did not have that two planning periods instead of only one, how much could we bring down the class size in those middle school classes without spending any additional money?
Through the President, to Member Donnelly, we can do those calculations for you. We can get those calculations back. So essentially, we have this amount of staff in seven periods, we'll run this amount of staff in six periods, and then see how that will fit, will work with the class sizes. Are there any other board members with comments or questions on the proposed budget? Member Hildy?
I just wanted to thank everybody for going over, you know, in our individual meetings and with our budget planning meeting as well earlier today. So I don't have any other questions right now.
And just to Member Donnelly's question, I do understand the math behind that. We're going to run it seven periods with two planned, seven periods without. So I did get that, the intent of your ask. We have those data from a couple of years ago as well.
Yeah, and the reason that's very budget-related is because that decision was made by the board within the budget vote, and I did disagree with it at that time, because it was going to raise class sizes in middle schools. But I'd like to see what the impact about, again, changing that policy and seeing how it would positively impact the size of classes in middle schools.
Next up, Member Marsette.
Yeah, I never get enough opportunity to thank Jim and his staff, and Mark, and Tom, and everyone for everything they do, difficult times going on right now, but you guys are stars. You always present to us in a manner that we understand, and if we don't, you're always ready to answer our questions. Kudos to board members for being responsive and reaching out and getting your questions answered, so that we have a good understanding of this budget. And again, just thank you, everyone.
Next up in the queue, Board Member Mitchell.
Thank you. I just wanted to, first of all, I echo Member Marsette's gratitude for all the work that everybody's been doing on this. And I'm so grateful for that federal money, because we're really in nice shape for next year. Member Donnelly, I understand the intent of your question, but I did just want to ask, I don't think that the, I don't think the middle school really was getting two planning periods. I think that was the, it was the design of the middle school model, because at that age, my understanding is students need a lot of extra support, and so the intent for that second period was not a second planning period, but it was a time, I believe, to meet with students and their parents, and also meet with their teams to talk about how to support their students best. So I think that all tied together with the middle school model, so I just wanted to clarify that. And I may be wrong about that, but that was my understanding. But I also understand where your question is coming from.
And next up in the queue, Board Member Donnelly.
Yeah, I think, Board Member Mitchell, I think it did morph into that. I think originally, it was a second planning period, but as implemented, and the superintendent could, you know, more accurately portray this, I think you're right. I think it was turned into those kinds of things that you just explained, yeah. If nobody else had another question, I did have another question on the budget.
Go ahead, there's no other hands up in the queue.
Yeah, thank you. My understanding is IGNITE is maintained at status quo in this proposed budget, is that correct?
Through the President, to Member Donnelly, yes. With the establishment also of a year-long process to evaluate its goals and within the board's guardrails about equity and representation, to really look at that. So this year, this coming school year, we have under the teaching and learning a parent group, as well as employees, to really evaluate the goals for IGNITE, and at that time, would come back with a recommendation.
And will IGNITE parents have an opportunity to participate on those boards and committees or whatever?
Parents already are members. It's already established, and parents are on it.
Okay.
Did you have any other questions, Member Donnelly?
No, thank you.
Do you want to quick look around? Does anybody else have any comments or questions on the proposed budget? All right, seeing none, we are going to move on. Just friendly reminder to public and everybody else, this is coming up for its second reading at our next board meeting, which is February 16th. We encourage as much, you know, comments and questions from our public, and, you know, any guidance that you may want to weigh in on. So please email us or, you know, reach out to us. So, thank you. Moving on, we do not have another public testimony, well, we don't have anybody signed up for public testimony, number two. So it brings us to school board and administration comments. If anybody has any last, final words for the evening. Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
So moved. Have a great night, everybody. Thank you for all of the participants.